Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I know that many of you are here today for the joint meeting of the Arts, Parks and Neighborhood and Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Before we start our joint meeting, the Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods Committee meeting will begin with a couple of items that we have separate to that committee. It just so happens that Mr. Reyes and I are both members of that committee as well. So, I'm Paul Krikorian, I'm the Chair of Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods, and we're going to get a couple of business items completed on that, and then we'll have public comment on the issues that are on the Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods Committee agenda, and anything that you would like to add that's relevant to that. But keep in mind that as soon as we conclude this separate meeting, we'll begin our joint meeting, and we'll be able to take public comment on the murals during that joint committee meeting. So, as I mentioned, I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of Arts, Parks and Neighborhood. I'm joined by the Honorable Ed Reyes, and let's begin with item number one on the Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods agenda.
Item number one, CAO report relative to proposed concession agreement between El Pueblo de Los Angeles and Soto Alvarez, a listed area in the specialty retail photo business located in the Hammel Building at 634 North Banjo Street.
Good afternoon, Claudia Aguilar with the CAO's office. Before you is a lease agreement for five-year term plus a five-year option for the Soto Alvarez Mexican-themed concession at the Hammel Building at El Pueblo. The rent will be $3,500 a month plus $346 maintenance fees. These fees are within what would be considered market rate in the RIG study. The department released an RSP and received response from our Soto Alvarez, so the tenant will have 90 days to execute the contract, and within that time, work on various tenants' improvements. And this revenue was not, it's already anticipated in the department's revenue, so if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you. So, it's consistent with the market rate study, revenue is already included in the budget. Mr. Reyes, do you have any questions or concerns about this? Do we have any cards on this matter?
There are no cards on the side.
Okay. Then it would be my recommendation to approve the CAO report and advance it to council, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Okay, that will be the unanimous ruling of this committee. Okay, that brings us to item number two.
Item number two, motion, Wezar Parks to launch our study relative to the proposed walk-in agreement with United Methodist Church in Los Angeles.
Good afternoon, I'm Clay Carter from the CLA's office. Before your committee is the cooperative agreement between the city and the United Methodist Church to provide access to La Plaza, United Methodist Church on Alvera Street. A working group consisting of the CLA, El Pueblo, the city attorney, and the mayor's office negotiated with representatives from the Methodist Church to produce the agreement that is before you today. The term of the agreement is a 15-year with a 15-year option. The total appraised market rent, including common area maintenance, is $662.86 per month. This rate provides the church 2,000 square feet of space for 80 hours per month. The church will operate a museum on the premises that will showcase the history of the contribution of United Methodist in Los Angeles. In lieu of rent, the church will perform additional in-kind services valued at $2,320 per month for 80 hours of use. One other note, the fire department has stated that the maximum occupancy of the church basement is only nine people. We recommend that the Bureau of Engineering report to the MFC committee on the scope of work and cost estimate for improvements to improve access to the basement. And one final note, the church is currently occupying the premises under a temporary right of occupancy permit with a rent of $232 per month. The church currently owes back rent for the months of September and October for a total of $464. We recommend full payment of this back rent before counsel, before final council approval of the agreement. The church concurs with the terms of the agreement and recently executed it, and we also recommend that the council approve the agreement. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, any questions on this? Thank you. I know that this has been a somewhat challenging road to get to this point. We've heard significant public comment during council from members of the church, and I know that Mr. Wezar has done yeoman's work to try to bring resolution to this, and I just wanted to know, is there anybody here from Mr. Wezar's staff who wanted to weigh in on this? I don't see anybody, so it sounds like we achieved a good result, and it would be my recommendation to approve the CLA report and advance it, and that will be the unanimous ruling. Thank you very much.
Technical details, Chair, we are receiving the CAO's or CLA's report that is having the gentleman's release, but we are receiving it.
Very good. Thank you very much, and I trust there were no cards on that either.
There are no cards on that.
Do we have a general public comment, cards, specific to Arts, Parks and Neighborhoods?
Nothing specific.
Okay.
Nothing to do with the joint.
Okay, very good. Well, then, in order to move that forward and expedite that joint meeting, with that, I think I can go ahead and adjourn our Arts, Parks and Neighborhood meeting and introduce Mr. Reyes, the Chair of our Plumb Committee, to begin the joint meeting.
Why don't we do that? We're expecting Councilman Wezar, I guess, huh? Is that anticipated to show? Okay, all right. Okay. Well, thank you, Councilman Krikorian, now that we've given the ceremonial switch here, it's a different interpretation for musical chairs. But...
Well, musical chairs is okay, Mr. Chairman, because we're so committed to the arts, so musical chairs is a good start.
That's a good one, all right. We'll start on a very positive note. Are we anticipating, Councilman Wezar?
I don't see him any word.
Okay, so he's in another committee making his way over here. Great. All right. Well, first, I want to thank the audience and all the stakeholders for their patience in addressing this issue. We can officially open up the Planning and Land Use Management and Arts, Parks and Neighborhood Special Joint Meeting Session, and we would like to do, if it's okay, Councilman Krikorian, is we can mash together items three through eight, since they're all on the same subject. We're going to address these topics, and we can have the departments address all of those points in their presentation, and we will have the public comment address all of those items as well. In terms of little housekeeping, there's a two-minute clock. You come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Some of you have written very eloquent letters, so hopefully we can get to that main point before the two minutes are up. If you feel that the person in front of you has already made your points, it's okay to say, "I agree with the previous speaker," and give us any additional information and/or insight to the subject matter, we would appreciate that very much. And so, before we begin, I just wanted to, at least, as Chair, give the sense of a goal, if you will, in the intent of moving this forward. I recognize, and I know my colleagues have valued the role of murals in the history of this great city. From Ciqueros back in the 20s and 30s, all the way to modern times, this city has been astounding in the international circles when it comes to how murals depict our history, depict our diversity, how we celebrate our music, our art, our food, our traditions, and every neighborhood has a different way of interpreting their environment, and the murals have an amazing way of capturing that. The challenge today is how we balance property rights, the freedom of speech, the First Amendment rights, with the capacity to enforce, to hold entities accountable for their actions, but to also respect neighborhoods and communities. So, this is a balancing act that we are going to try to achieve, and we can't do it without you. We need your input, we need your support. We, as policymakers, are going to do everything we can to embrace the history of Los Angeles and the talent and the skill set. We also need to find a way to process and enforce laws in a manner that is balanced and fair. So, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
A technical issue.
Yes.
Since we announced and have on the agenda, the meeting starts at 3:30, do we have to wait till 3:30?
Well, yes, you should wait until 3:30, because people that might want to be, you don't...
So, we have, it's 3:15?
Yes, we have 15 minutes.
Are we going to get penalized for being efficient?
Yes, yes, we have 15 minutes to tap dance.
Okay, so, does anybody want to sing a song?
Well...
No, I'm just kidding.
I actually thought that, Mr. Chairman, I thought that the agenda was prepared to say that this beginning would, this meeting would begin at the conclusion of Arts, Parks, but I suppose one option might be that we could reopen public comment for the Arts, Parks meeting.
Do you have public comment?
Can we do that, even though I've already adjourned?
Well, yes, you can do that, if anybody wants to talk on that.
But it could be general public comment in the Arts, Parks meeting, which would be presumably directed largely at murals. Can we do that, so that we don't have to keep people waiting?
Well, as long as it's general comment, you can do that, but they can always wait until 3:30 to do what they want to do. So, yeah, you can open that up if you'd like.
Even if we adjourn the meeting?
Well, but they need to, in general comment, they talk about things that are not otherwise on the agenda, so technically, they're not allowed to talk about things that are on another part of the agenda.
Right.
Yes.
This is not agendized for the Arts, Parks?
Okay, that's fine.
If you make this for 15 minutes. We've been joined by Councilman Wezar, and it was brought to my attention that the agenda says that the joint committee will not begin till 3:30, and we're 15 minutes ahead. So, Councilman, do you want to reopen the Arts Committee and open that up for general public comment on the items that are not on the agenda for the Arts Committee?
Which would include presumably the matters that are on the agenda for the joint committee, so it's up to you, I think, well, we should decide whether we want to have a public comment before or after the presentation.
Well, we could just take a 10-minute break.
I think maybe it might make more sense to have the presentation before we have comment.
So, should we just do a 10-minute break then, or? Let's do this, just so that I don't get, or notice later that we're going to get sued because we didn't follow the Brown Act, and someone didn't hear what they wanted to hear and now has a premise to sue us with. To make sure we are in the clear, we'll take a 10-minute recess?
And, Mr. Chairman, I mean, truly, it's more than just a technicality, because there may very well be people in our community who are very passionately involved in this issue, who want to hear the presentation that they've waited for, for over a year. And so, you know, I think if they're, in fact, for example, we have members of the press who are just now arriving, for example, so I think that it does make sense, as a practical matter, to just go ahead and give a few minutes until 3:30, so we make sure everybody who cares about this issue is here before we begin.
I'm definitely thirsty, so I'll go get something to drink.
And it'll give me a chance to eat my lunch without being rude during the meeting.
Eat your lunch, there you go, without heartburn. Okay, so, we'll recess for 10 minutes, and we will technically begin the agenda items at 3:30, as announced in the agenda. Thank you for your patience. It's officially and technically 3:30. We're officially and technically following the rules of the Brown Act. Need to put that on record. I want to thank my colleagues for being here, and today was one of those days in which we're squeezing in our lunch and breakfast, and I'll just mention to Councilman Krikorian that it's, when you got to fight for 10 minutes, eat a sandwich, and you know you're busy. So, I thank you, Councilman Krikorian, for your stamina. I think I've already made some introductory comments, but we are officially starting the 3:30 meeting. We haven't heard from the staff yet, we haven't heard the substance of the action of this committee yet, so I want to make that call for the record, that we are officially starting this at 3:30. I want to thank the staff, and I'm going to say this every chance I get, that when I look at the city attorney's office, they've lost, I would say, over 25, maybe even 30% of the staff, given everything we've been through in the past three years, with the E-WEP and folks leaving because of the tough times we're in. And so, I want to thank Mr. Fong and his stewardship, because I think it's four years now that you've been wrestling with this, and something like that, right? And then we have the Cultural Affairs Department, who's been doing a yeoman's job in making sure we maintain a level of priority and focus for the arts of the city, let alone put together policy and program recommendations, that follow legal parameters, and also working with the planning department, so they've also taken a tremendous hit in the budget cuts, and planning is surviving without 40% of its staff. And so, I want to thank planning department for their yeoman's job and staying focused on this. And as they will describe what they've done up to this point, together with Cultural Affairs and City Attorney, and both departments will be speaking to the substance of the issue, what they've been through, and my hope is that one day we can ask Building and Safety that there's an issue in a district that they have very clear indicators of how to proceed in the enforcement of this ordinance, and that, to me, is going to be critical in how we address the quality of life issues while maintaining artistic freedom to be able to celebrate our artwork through murals. And so, that's the balancing act that we will hopefully achieve with your help. My colleagues, I'd like to ask if there's any other observations or comments you'd like to make before we get the presentations started?
Thank you.
Thank Councilman Wezar.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank both you and Mr. Krikorian as Chair of your respective committees for bringing us together today to hopefully come in a more clear direction as to how do we move forward to define murals separately from signs and get away from the litigation that is occurring there that has been problematic for our office's ability to put up new murals throughout our city. I think what I've been hearing, we also need to address the issue of getting a revenue stream, so that helps protect and restore our existing areas, and it's important to implement whatever policies we come up with as soon as possible to aid this moratorium as soon as possible as well. I have introduced close to 19 motions since 2006 about murals, so that we could, out of the moratorium, get a revenue stream and get away from the sign litigation that is occurring, and from what I've heard in some of the initial reports from the departments, they've come up with some creative solutions to do that. I'm very interested in this, not only because of my support for more public art and murals. I grew up in Boa Heights, and remember the murals that Estrada Courts were all around me, and it reminded me of my history, my culture, and identity. And when I wasn't getting it in my textbooks in the classroom, I certainly was getting it off the murals and the walls around my neighborhood. It made me ask questions about the Aztecs, made me ask questions about the revolution in Mexico, and made me feel proud that there were people like me being reflected on my walls in my neighborhood. And that's why it's been important to me, but it's also been important to me because I recognize that in my district, we probably have twice as many murals than any other district in the city of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles, at one time, was considered the mural capital of the world, and it all started in the east side of Los Angeles, when people wanted to express themselves, whether for cultural or political reasons, primarily in the 1960s. That's not to mention that that movement didn't start right back in the times of the 1930s and '40s, when we had some other social unrest. We have the Ciqueros mural at Placita Vera that, thanks to our mayor and the Getty Center, that's now being renovated and preserved. But that mural alone, I think, is emblematic of the need to do something immediately, to not only preserve the murals we have, but also to support more murals, and that now as we are preserving the Ciqueros mural, it is so and so much about our city, our history, and what happened in that time period, and we certainly hope that with protecting more of our murals and having more murals go up throughout our city, we will continue to tell the history of the city of Los Angeles for generations to come. So, I think, I look at this as something that's very, very important for the past, present, and future of the city, and hopefully move with this as expeditiously as possible.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Los Angeles is known throughout the world as being a creative center. It is a city that has as its very source of identity, art and creativity and innovation and diversity, and all of those things are reflected in the long and proud history that Los Angeles has of murals. And we see the broad diversity of Los Angeles in our murals. We see the history of Los Angeles in our murals, and in my own district, we have the longest mural in the United States of America, the Great Wall of Los Angeles. Some consider it to be the largest monument to diversity and tolerance anywhere on earth, and it has been now beautifully restored in the tangawa wash. But at the same time, we've really struggled with trying to find a policy that meets our strong desire to preserve this incredibly important art form for Los Angeles, while still accommodating the concerns that many in our city have about the blight that comes from commercial signage. And I think for many people, they think, "Why are those two things even being discussed in the same conversation?" Because we, you know, we don't like commercial signs, but we like murals. Obviously, as we're going to see, I think, in the presentation, the legal answer to that is an exceedingly difficult one, and I really want to express my thanks to our staff in City Attorney's Office, in the Planning Department, in Cultural Affairs, for trying to wrestle through these incredibly complex, difficult legal and First Amendment issues that come with this. I think that this joint meeting is an important next step in solving those problems, getting us on a strong foundation to achieve what I think we widely want to achieve, which is preserving our existing murals, encouraging more murals, making the city be the robust center of mural art that it is known throughout the world for being, and have it continue to be that, while at the same time, still having effective enforcement mechanism against commercial signage and other things that degrade, in some respects, our quality of life. So, my colleagues, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Wezar, have both been tremendously active leaders on this issue, and I think that this joint meeting gives us the opportunity to begin to bring some of these issues to closure, and begin to advance the ball towards a real, workable ordinance which will achieve both of those objectives. And so, I thank you both for your leadership and for the next steps that we're going to be taking today.
Thank you, Councilman. And I just want to put this in the back of your minds, is that this is one step that we're taking. At the end of this meeting, we're not going to have the silver bullet, we're not going to have the magic wand, it's not going to be there. I don't want to create those expectations of you. We want to move this as quick as possible, and hopefully, with your input, we can get there. My intent, as Chair, is to make it happen as quick as possible, but to be as efficient and thorough, and making sure we address the issues of accountability, as I have spoken before. So, that being said, Roberto, read into the record what's in front of us, item three through eight, and if you can maybe just summarize it, what happened, and read each one?
Sure. What you have before you are various motions, I count three, four, six motions that have been introduced relative to art murals and private property, also the issue of citations in the city, and ways to elect an ordinance that would regulate and promote murals in the city. And also before you is a cultural affairs report and a presentation by the planning department.
Thank you, thank you, Roberto. That being said, if we could have the Department of Cultural Affairs report, and I believe we have with us, Felicia?
Felicia Fowler.
And Felicia Fowler is the Director of Public Arts, and if you can provide us your report, and then we can take from there.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm also joined by Pat Gomez, the Murals Manager from our department, so if I forget anything, I'll turn to Pat to sort of chime in here.
Thank you, Pat.
But I hope you had a chance to review the report. I know that you may have received it a little bit later than was idealized, but there's a lot of information in there, factual information, that we hope will be useful to you, to your committee, as you move forward to make a decision. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the research methodology that we use to analyze our murals database for the purposes of identifying a set of enabling criteria and characteristics that define the existing conditions of murals in the city.
As much as you can, try your best to speak into the microphone, because as you pull back, your voice fades away.
Okay, is that a little bit better?
Much better.
And then I'll introduce, very briefly, the three mural permit, proposed mural permit process, but I won't go into detail with those, because Tanner Blackman from Planning will give you more descriptions about the features and the specific criteria for each of those processes. I'll describe a little bit about the existing funding challenges that we identified as part of our report, and then also highlight how many murals the three permit process could capture and preserve for the city at this time. So, for the past year, we've been working very consistently with the planning department, Building and Safety, and the city attorney to identify, as I mentioned, a set of criteria that describe the conditions of murals. We looked at the locations of murals, whether they would be on city property, private property, school property, county or state property. We looked at the placement of murals, if they were located at grade level, or raised, or abutted, or set back from property. We looked at the age of murals, and from murals that date, that predate 1971 up to 2010. We also looked at the materials that most of the murals have been painted in over the past 30-plus years, as well as the funding sources that was used to create those murals. And we started with our database of 1,614 murals, and the goal was, again, to identify a set of defining characteristics that would be quantitative, measurable, and content-neutral, but that could also be used to develop a set of enabling criteria for the three proposed mural processes moving forward. And I should say that we acknowledge in our report that our database does not include all of the murals that exist within the city of Los Angeles. There are hundreds of murals, probably thousands... There are hundreds of murals, probably thousands of murals, that we don't have information on, so we see our database as merely a representative sample of the mural stocks that exist. What we learned was that of the 1,614 murals, 402 murals no longer exist. They've been, you know, painted out or removed because the building was either remodeled or modified. That precluded the continuance of the murals. 424 murals are located on L.A. Unified School District property. 261 murals are located on city property, which left a balance of 507 murals that are on private property. And of those 507, 138 murals are interiors. So we're really talking about, in our database, 369 murals that are exterior murals located on private property. And for the purposes of our report, that's really the sample size that we're talking So in looking at murals, we identified that roughly 300, I'm doing my math in my head, 369, my 16, 353 murals are actually older than, were put in place prior to 2006. So from 1931 to 2006, 363, 53 murals were commissioned throughout the city. And that number is important, because one of the recommendations with regards to the vintage mural permit is going to look at age. And so there is a recommendation to identify a pre-established date with which we could permit retroactively murals that are already existing. And by utilizing the pre-established date of five years from the date that the ordinance, that a proposed vintage mural ordinance would be enacted, the city could ostensibly preserve 353 murals of the 369 would be retroactively permitted under a vintage mural permit. And again, Tanner will give you more information about how the vintage permit will function. We also looked at mural size, which is a very critical component as part of the time, place, and manner permit. And we identified that roughly 264 of the 369 murals are between the sizes of 40 square feet and 1,000 square feet. So one of the criteria that is presented in the time, place, and manner process is that murals have a maximum size of 1,000 square feet and be located at grade level. Again, that is something that we have found is a condition that is current within our existing conditions, and that murals larger than 1,000 square feet would be applicable for the public art easement process for a number of reasons. I think the other thing that we, and the public art easement, just sort of following on that, the public art easement process is going to require a public investment of funds. And so as a result of that, we looked at the funding history and the funding challenges of murals over the past 10 years.
Felicia, I want to interrupt you for a second. For the layperson, public easement process, what does that mean?
The public easement process would be an over-the-counter permit, it would be a permit issued by the Department of Cultural Affairs, and the property owner of a building would have to donate their wall as an easement to the city, making the city a patron of the art. And as a patron, the city would be required to fund in part or fully some aspect of either the creation and/or maintenance of the mural.
So either the property owner and/or the person who desires to use that space as a mural would have to identify that location and...
Request an easement.
Request the easement. Okay.
That's correct.
The right to paint on it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And the public art easement would also be specifically for very large murals, as I mentioned, 1,000 square foot up to however big it can get, and would also not be limited to material type.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the funding challenges, what we identified is that, and there's no surprise here, that the majority of murals on private property are paid for by private property owners. 216 of the 369 murals were paid for by private sources. And then the second-largest funding source for the city was, the first-largest funding source for the city is the Department of Public Works Community Beautification Grant. However, that program, funding for that program has been eliminated, which has seriously curtailed the city's ability to fund new murals. Other programs, such as the Great Walls Neighborhood Pride Program, the Mural Rescue and Targeted Neighborhood Initiative Programs, funding has been eliminated completely. So really, the only source of city funding that remains is the council office civic funds. So, you know, one of the requests that, one of the recommendations is that if the committee chooses to pursue the public art easement option, that a definitive source of funding would have to be identified for that program. And finally, in conclusion, I think what Cultural Affairs is recommending is that the three proposed mural processes, we are not presenting them as an either-or approach, but as a multi-tiered solution to permit murals on private property. And our report is intended to help the committee and City Council clarify how they can develop a series of strategies to permit murals on private property, as well as maintaining the murals in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Tanner, and he will take you through his presentation, which sort of visually depicts some of these processes, as well as the specific features.
Thank you. Thank you, Felicia. I'm sure we'll have more questions later. I appreciate that overview.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council members and everyone else.
Thanks for coming out. My name is Tanner Blackman. I work for the City Planning Department in the Code Studies section of City Planning. For those who don't know, Code Studies is essentially the legislative unit within the City Planning Department. So it's our job to craft new ordinance language, workshop it with the public, and guide new ordinances through the adoption process. It's my honor to present to you today, and I thank you for allowing me to take some time to give the presentation, because I think it's important for, that everybody's operating with the same set of facts, and these are really confusing issues we're dealing with, so I'll get started. First off, nothing I'm presenting here today is new. We've been discussing this issue for four years in the city of L.A. The approaches I'm going to discuss are already in reports from the Cultural Affairs Commission, from the Department of Cultural Affairs. This is sort of just crystallizing the main issues, I think, of the policy goals we're struggling with, and some possible approaches and solutions today. So with that, I'm going to go over briefly the issues resulting in the current mural prohibition, the directions for research and development that the various departments have received from this joint committee in the past, and the steps we've made in researching them, the procedural next steps towards the adoption of a mural ordinance, and the public outreach efforts we've been doing the last several months, and will continue to do so as this process moves forward, and to get some direction from the joint committee on how to proceed with actually crafting an ordinance and hopefully releasing some draft language before long. And for me, really, I'm using this as an outreach opportunity to get feedback from you guys. So I hope that this presentation will help kind of direct some commentary towards these avenues we've been researching.
Isn't it true that one of the reasons why we have a much stronger foundation today to address this issue is because we did get some direction from all the lawsuits that have been reaching the conclusion with the sign ordinance and billboard ordinance, and there's not a lot of them anymore out there? But we've received at least some clarity as to where we can take this element of this process to a much more specific place when it comes to implementation.
I'll get into a lot of the past details, but there was a change sort of last fall. There was a lawsuit that was decided that allows us to move forward with district approaches for sign districts and potentially murals. So that's one reason why we kind of can move forward now. Another good thing is, you know, the Cultural Affairs and City Planning brought together a mural working group this summer to start reaching out to muralists and gallerists and other interested parties towards drafting some language and workshopping these ideas in the state of infancy, and that's sort of what I'm going to present today.
Thank you.
Before I get into the meat, though, this is a very fun game I like to play in City Hall called Is This a Mural? I'm not going to make you guys guess. I'll give you the answers, but it's fun, and it gets your brain thinking about, you know, these issues that we deal with in a visual way, so I think it's good. 100% of people who look at this image agree it's a mural. Objectively, it is paint-on-wall. I'd say it's sort of traditionally, like Siquieros tradition-type classic mural. It's actually in the city database that was just mentioned by my colleagues at the Cultural Affairs Department. Isabel can tell you where it is, I forget. So 100% of people agree this is a mural. Okay? Similarly, this one's also a lob. 100% of people agree this is a mural for sort of the same reason. So at this point in the game, we're two-for-two. We know a mural when we see one. It's easy, right? When you go to here, again, you have paint-on-wall, different stylistic aims, and sort of maybe different generation, what we call street art nowadays. Unfortunately, there's no mural permitting process in place today, so this could not become a mural in the city of L.A. And there's a weird thing about our definition, that you can't have more than 3% text, or all of a sudden it's not a mural. I haven't measured that. Perhaps that cream of the crop is more than 3%, and it couldn't be a mural than in the city of L.A. That 3% text limitation, it's really limiting artistically, I'd say. This is not a mural in the city of Los Angeles. This is a mural in the city of Philadelphia, in their civic-sponsored, this is a civic-sponsored City Art Collection mural in the city of L.A. It's actually a poem, I mean, Philadelphia, it's a poem that runs all the way through this community. Because of this limitation on the amount of text one could have on a mural, this could not be considered a mural in the city of L.A. under our current regulations.
Can you give me the address of that place, because I do have those problems, the migraines and the legs are sore and the back is sore?
We're getting to it. We're getting to it. On the 180 degrees from that text issue, a mural, there's no such thing as a mural in the city of L.A. We only have mural signs. That's how it's defined in our code. And therefore, a mural is a subset of sign. One definitional quality of a sign is that it must convey a message. I'm not sure there's any message being conveyed here, nor do I require all art to convey messages aesthetically, as I see it. It begs the question, if I were to paint my home in zebra stripes, is that a paint job or a mural? I don't have the answer for that question. I'm not sure anyone in this room does, but it sort of begs the question of, is sign the right category for these things? That one is actually a mural in the city of L.A. That's in our database as well. When we move to this, it gets even trickier. So musica en vivo, playa las tunas, we understand that's a sign, that's advertising the restaurant that's there. Or if you look a little bit south, you see a follicking lagoon scene of sea creatures. I don't really think that's onsite advertising, because I doubt they're serving dolphin or mermaid at this restaurant. So it's sort of just folk art on the building. If you look a little bit further south, there's some frutas in the corner there, they have jugos. I live in Koreatown on Third Street and Eighth Street. There's lots of Oaxacan markets and Salvadoran markets that have like overflowing cornucopias of fruit and stuff. There's a strong folk art tradition. I don't want to be the guy to say that's not a mural in the city of Los Angeles. I could see a permitting system where one pulls a permit for the actual text, and if one wants to adorn their business with art, that's a separate permit. It gets trickier, though, because we get further into subjectivities where people like things or they don't like things in their neighborhood. Is this offsite advertising? I'm not sure how to define such things. Owner of this market, I doubt, is receiving payment from Cheetos or Ajax. They probably put it on their own, but it sort of functions in the public visual scape as offsite advertising. Gets really tricky, because one person who may not like this in their neighborhood might just love this and think, how lovely that there's a De Bruno's Wine and Cheese mural in my neighborhood. So it's really, really difficult for us to draw these content distinctions in what is a mural and what isn't. Thankfully, there are some clear lines where, under no circumstances, is this a mural. This is an outdoor advertising program by Colt 45 done in this graffiti-style wheat paste thing, quite heinous. We have an offsite advertising ban in the city. This is not a mural. This is graffiti. We are not proposing to change anything about laws with vandalism. It will still be illegal to paint on someone else's property. We just hope we can come to a permitting system where people are allowed to paint on their own property. As you can see, there's lots of unclear lines here, and it's largely due to the way that these are written. As I mentioned already, a sign is any whole or part of a display board, wall screen, or object used to announce, declare, demonstrate, display, or otherwise present a message and attract the attention of the public. As a subset of sign, mural signs in the city of Los Angeles are signs painted on or applied to a wall and made integral with the wall, the written message of which does not exceed 3% of the total area of the sign. There's some overlap in how we define wall signs, which are meant to be, you know, Joe's Cleaners or advertising the business there, but since those can also be paint-on-wall, it's really not clear what may be what. The big question, though, and the question I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about, is are murals banned in Los Angeles? The answer is yes, sadly, and no, kind of, because there are still some narrow ways that murals may be permitted and created in the city of Los Angeles. If it's on county, city property, we own it, we can adorn our public buildings. So they're also on county, state, and federal property, they're outside of our jurisdiction. L.A. USD can put up murals, Metro, other things. The real crux of the issue we're dealing with here today is murals on private property. So currently in our code, there are only three narrow mechanisms by which murals may be permitted on private property: through a legally adopted specific plan, a supplemental use district, AKA a sign district, or a development agreement. And that's much too limiting, we've found, over the last nine years, that this limitation has been in place. So when people hear that there is this ban on murals in L.A., people sort of react with shock and dismay, and it's important to kind of go through the timeline to understand why and how we got to this point, because at no time was it ever a policy goal of the city of Los Angeles to restrict down areas available for neighborhood-enhancing community art. Never. Prior to 1986, murals were not mentioned, the word mural was not mentioned at all in our municipal code. If you don't define something, then in code, everybody has to go to the commonly accepted dictionary definition, and we really try not to define things if we don't have to, because once defined, legally, they become that and only that in code. So before 1986, murals were not mentioned, therefore unregulated. And starting from the '60s, '70s, '80s, this was the sort of height of our mural production in Los Angeles, where it was sort of free-for-all. In 1986, 25 years ago, in order to deal with some of the same issues we're still dealing with today, with billboards and outdoor advertising and these sort of things, we wrote the comprehensive sign ordinance that we pretty much still have today. The Plum Committee will be discussing changes to that next week. And this was the first time we had actually a definition of murals, the one that we have now, mural signs, in our code, but there was basically a blanket exemption, where all of these rules applied to signs, but fine art murals were exempted from those rules. Due to some legal challenges in the early 2000s, and that we essentially had to create a general ban on murals and the creation of sign districts as the sort of outlet for where murals could be created. The reason for this was, the challenge was that by giving unlimited space for art in our built environment, we were privileging one type of protected speech over another, namely privileging art over advertising. And since they're both protected speech, in order to be true to the Constitution, we had to sort of be equally unfair to all of them and put them under the same ban. That's sort of, like I said, been in place since 2009. However, I believe 2007 was the most recent mural approved on private property, and that becomes important, those two dates, on where to set the time from which will grandfather vintage murals as we look at that. So knowing that this is the issues we deal with, what do we do about it now? And I'm really happy that we're presenting solutions here today and not just talking about it. We have ideas that we can, we believe are actionable. about it, we have ideas that we can, that we believe are actionable. There's been tons of council motions in past meetings on this, but it sort of boils down to two main policy goals, I'd say, preserve and protect existing murals and enable creation of new murals. So, I'll walk through, the first one's kind of easier, and then there's a few approaches for the second goal there. Yep.
Have you, I did think those are the two main points, but under your preserve and protect existing murals, that would also include a funding revenue source to do that, right?
It's true, and so in our kind of division of labor, that was in the DCA report, which we contributed to, all of these ideas, DCA contributed to this presentation as well, and so, yeah, these are the departments working together, and they identify funding sources just for just that issue.
Those cost issues, that's a further complicate, but we're talking about the personnel cost of implementing the program within the city's administration, and we're talking about the cost of preserving murals and/or monitoring murals, so that they are, how to put this, identifiable as murals, right? So, there's two different layers of costs.
There's the cost of running a system where we give permits. There's sort of a separate cost of following up if there's any issues that we have to go cite, you know, people not using those permits correctly. If it is a, an investment in public art through, like, an easement approach, which I'll explain in a second, then that would sort of require additional investment in public art in the way the city hasn't done in a while, and that's where we're looking at sources for where that could possibly come from. But on the other approaches, the time, place, manner, it's essentially cost-neutral in that the cost of the permit should cover the administrative cost of giving out the permit, so hopefully.
Okay, I'll wait till we get there.
So, before I go into these actual approaches, they are, I want to just be clear and reiterate the considerations that we have to look at, which are these implementation things you were just mentioning, Chairman Reyes, program costs, accessibility of the public, maintenance, these sort of issues. But in the design, conceptually of the program, we, the regulations we come up with must be content-neutral, we cannot make these types of distinctions we've made in the past, and they therefore can only include time, place, and manner restrictions, and again, we do have some solutions. So, on the issue of preserving existing murals, the Cultural Affairs Report is wonderfully documents the over seventeen hundred murals that we know of in the city of L.A. that sort of, have either been approved by the Cultural Affairs Commission in the past or have received some sort of city funding. Those are, and the report breaks that up in a city extrajurisdictional and private property. Presumably, there are thousands more out there that we don't even know about, that were built, were created prior to 2002 or prior to 2007. And those ones are presumably grandfathered as existing non-conforming, they were created at a time when they were allowed. But since there was no documenting of them at the time, there's no documents to prove how old they are, and so even if something was created with city money that was approved by Cultural Affairs at some time in the past, it's potentially threatened by the fact that we don't have clear regulations on how to deal with these vintage murals. So, the idea, and it's sort of a simple fix, is there needs to be an affirmative statement in code that sort of says all murals prior to this date are legal, but as well as that, we need to create some sort of vintage mural permit, where one, where we either compel people to get them, or one can get one should they receive a citation and need to go to Building and Safety and prove that they're murals of a certain age. The biggest issue on writing that is sort of how to establish the date it was created. A lot of these works are actually copyrighted and VAR-protected, they therefore have a clear date, there could be historic news clippings or receipts and records.
Couldn't we introduce, and I'm just shooting from the hip here, but let's assume that this dialogue takes on a greater context setting, and those advocates that are here and people that are concerned with this issue, could we give like a period of time that allows people who are concerned for their artwork, and if a property owner wants to bring forth a mural, could we give them, and just again, the ability to identify these hundreds or thousands of murals that we don't know about? This grace period, if you will, allowing people to come out and document what they have, so that way they're not threatened, and we don't start painting over something that someone values and/or has a strong concern for. I mean, that's a possible.
I think that's a very good idea for how we design this vintage mural permit. I mean, it would work sort of, as, a lot of jurisdictions have as-built permits for you, oops, I built this thing and I didn't seek proper permitting, and you can kind of get a forgiveness permit after the fact. I guess it would be sort of like that, but the, one thing I do, I like the idea of a grace period, because we have to keep in mind that most people are going to live and die in Los Angeles, never realizing that they have to ask our permission to paint on their walls in the first place. So, however the program is designed, it needs to be quite forgiving, I would say. Okay.
Yeah, well, I was gonna, I think, I was reading while you guys were discussing it, but I, the vintage mural permit talks about five years prior to the adoption of the ordinance, so that means if we adopted, let's say this month, five years prior to this would take us back to 2005.
Two thousand and six.
Six, six, two thousand and six. And, so any murals painted before that will be grandfathered in, correct? We've recently had some murals come up within a year or so. What can we do about those?
Okay, so, okay, and let's go to the next question. Permitting new murals then will capture things that, from, you know, the day after that new ordinance is in place.
So, your discussion about permitting?
So, then we have a gap of five years of murals in limbo, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're, the five years came up because the last mural approved on private property in the city of Los Angeles was in 2007. So, assuming you're not going to adopt it next month, it'll be 2012, that, that kind of goes back to 2007, and I was hoping to justify it somehow that way, that that's a reasonable date because of that. Really, the, I think it's up to the city council what that date is and how you want to grandfather from when, and I don't think it would have to be five years. I think that was just a departmental recommendation based on sort of the history, so I think it's up to you.
Gotcha. And we haven't found a solution to those who have been cited by Building and Safety for putting up a mural, have we?
That, who've already sort of gone through this citation process and kind of retroactively addressed that?
Well, we, I suggested in one of the motions that we not cite the muralists who have put up some murals recently, and Building and Safety had issued a citation, that we have a forgiveness period for those. You know.
Well, if memory serves, yourself and Councilmember Labonge had a 2008 motion instructing the departments not to issue mural citations at all, until we have.
And have we been doing that, have we?
As far as I know, I mean, Mr. Zambrini can speak to the actions later, the only issue cases I know of where we have cited and had to buff over walls in the recent past were because of a complaint of a neighbor. And so, when someone calls and we actually have to come out and take a look at it, well, we have to enforce the rules on our book, but I think it's been this sort of understanding to try to wait until we have an ordinance in place.
Okay.
And I, potentially, it could even be, the permitting new murals potentially could be created where it allows for ones that are already in this special case, I'm not sure, it seems like we could go lots of different ways with the program design.
Thank you.
So, there are three main approaches I want you guys to be clear on. One has already been referenced today, the Public Art Easements. This was, so, not that we love Portland all that much, but that they have, provide a pretty good analog to our sign battles as well, and so they have two different sign, mural programs going on concurrently right now that are a sort of package of mural regulations. And they've had this one, this Public Art Easements program, in place since, I believe, 2005, maybe 2004, and we've been discussing it in the city of L.A. since a November 2008 Department of City Planning report, where our department said, this is a cool idea that we should maybe do, but it was something we couldn't do when it was hot and heavy trying to comprehensively rewrite the whole sign ordinance, and it kind of just became an appendix to that report, sadly. The, what a Public Art Easement program is, is a program to create new public art on private property by the city becoming a patron of the arts through an easement approach. So, as Felicia mentioned, the building owner in that case would actually have to grant an easement of the wall of the building, where the city then actually owns the wall, and since we would own it, we are a patron of the arts and could make these distinctions. Not only is this good art, not only is this art or is this commerce, but do we like it, based on, you know, the criteria of the Cultural Affairs Commission. And through that process, there's no limitations then on medium or size, and it would just sort of be up to the Cultural Affairs Commission to approve. And they also have a competitive selection for funding, so it is a real, like, investment in public art. Did you have a question, or just?
Yeah, well, I just want to clarify, because I think it's a semantic issue, but it could become important as people start to consider this. The easement does not give the city ownership of the wall. The easement gives the city the entitlement to regulate what's painted on the wall.
True, true, true.
Right? So, I mean, there's no issue of, you know, somebody having to give part of their building away, it's giving a limited right to do something to that wall, and I think that's going to become important as we begin to talk about that. And first, let me just make sure my assumption is correct. Is my assumption, in fact, correct, that that's the limitation of the easement?
Yes, City Attorney here, Ken Fong. I just want to elaborate on that, that comes directly from Portland, and over the years, my office and planning has talked extensively with Portland, they had a number of lawsuits involving mural signs. And the concept behind the art easement program is that the government can express its own ideas and place its own art on its own property and is not subject to the First Amendment. You have examples in city halls where you have statues, statues and paintings and other things, so this would be simply an extension of that, and they've done it for several years in Portland, they have not been subject to litigation, and we feel that it rests on some sound legal principles, although it has not been tested yet.
So, for clarity, with that easement in place, the city can make a subjective distinction between what it considers to be art and what it considers to be advertising.
And based on, this is some sample selection criteria that is from the Portland's program. I mean, I know that in times past, when our Cultural Affairs Commission could approve murals on private property, they had their own selection criteria, so I'm not saying this is what we should use or exactly use, but these are sort of the range of things that are considered in that type of program, but these are, you know, things that are off the table when we're looking at just a permitting, time, place, manner approach. Then there, so the benefits of such an approach are that, as Felicia mentioned, it could be kind of anything goes, where they could go, be without size limitations, or have different media and surfaces, and it would, this would be a wonderful sort of city investment in art and beautification in a way we haven't done in a while, should there be resources available. And as I mentioned already, and it's sort of, I'm happy to write multiple ordinances, this could be a really balanced approach, the way it works in Portland, that they have the original arts murals and this public art easement. The biggest issue is budgetary, I'd imagine, and has been the issue since we first started talking about this in late 2008. And also, thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Krikorian, on the easement, because that, I think that's kind of a boogeyman, that some people think that's scary, that Big Brother will own your wall and tell you what you can or can't paint on it then. So, a completely different approach, also in Portland, two years ago, September, August or September 2009, they created a new ordinance called the Original Art Murals. This does not go through their equivalent of the Cultural Affairs Commission. This is an administrative permit that's handed out by their equivalent of the Building and Safety Department, like one would get a sign permit, where there is no discretion being used. It is a check-in-the-boxes, do you meet these requirements? Okay, it's a mural, go paint it. So, it's an administrative permit to allow original art murals on a content-neutral basis on certain terms and conditions in a simple and accessible way. The way they've been able to achieve this is by defining mural as something other than sign, and they've even completely divorced these regulations from their sign code and created a new section in the Portland municipal code, and they define mural as a hand-produced work of visual art, which is tiled or painted by hand directly upon, or affixed to an exterior wall of a building, it's not just that definition, it's these set of parameters. So, you define something as such, and then further define it by what it can or can't be. So, there's a minimum square foot in this case, of thirty-two square feet, there's a thirty-foot max, there's a six-inch max protrusion from the wall, the mural must remain in place for five years, the building owner cannot receive compensation for it. Those two provisions are key, because this is meant to, those two provisions are meant to stop this from being used for advertising, so it's being disincentive for this mural program to be used as advertising, a mural would have to stay up for at least five years. Further, there can be no mechanical parts or changing images, if one sort of has to go outside of that box, then you could apply for a public art easement in Portland and do, you know, different types of media and stuff. They have other protections for historic and design overlays and residential with less than five units. A key component, too, is this neighborhood involvement process. So, if someone wants to put a mural on their wall in Portland, they have to convene, have a meeting, invite their neighbors over, show them what they want to do, put on, basically document that you've done that and bring that documentation in when you go to get your mural permit. And so, it's basically a simple, cheap administrative application and small fee. The benefits of such a program would be pretty awesome, I think, they could encourage murals citywide, we could sort of let art happen, it kind of creates a simple permit to go paint on your wall. And it kind of clearly separates art murals from signs, and it's potentially simple and effectively cost-neutral to administer, and the regulations themselves are what we're aiming at, content-neutral, time, place, manner restrictions. The biggest issue with this approach, I would argue, is that it's sort of an untested legal approach. This program is only two years old in Portland, the bad news is it hasn't been sued yet, so we don't know if it will survive legal challenge, the good news is it's two years old and it hasn't been sued yet. The other sort of simple issues with training and implementation, and I hope we can assess public sentiment today, but they're sort of standard issues in creating any new program. Another approach that's on the table is a district approach, and as I mentioned before, the sign districts, the sign districts, supplemental use districts, were imagined in 2002 to capture outside-of-the-box sign types generally, but over the years, they've sort of become billboard districts in many ways. And as I mentioned before, it was never a policy goal of the city to restrict artistic production, and it's just this weird legal situation we're in, but it's also commerce, because we do have several sign districts in the city, and there's a fair question is why don't we have murals being produced in those areas, becomes very valuable advertising space for eyes on the street, and art is kind of squeezed out by commerce, I would argue. But, so, following how we've established some sign districts in the city, there could be, you know, a mural district or various mural districts, and what I will think that, whether we take a citywide or a district approach, probably the design would be something akin to the original art murals in both cases, either on a citywide basis or in a more contained sort of pilot program basis. But, so, one benefit of a district approach is that it could promote unique characteristics of communities, if we have sort of, you know, different types of materials in different areas, and it could, I say, you know, serve as a pilot program for a future citywide program, and we know this is a legally defensible approach. There's a big issue potentially with equity, I think everybody might want the first mural district in that case, and so that limited geography, and as we've done them in the past, if it is a supplemental use district, that would require like a two-step adoption process and be sort of fairly complicated to set up, which would be an issue as well. Those are the main three approaches, really briefly, this is the how a bill becomes a law flowchart for the Department of City Planning. We're currently in that middle public outreach area, I've been, like I said, for months now, going out to the public as much as possible to speak about these issues, and we still have to go after this committee, I have to go through the whole process, I have to go to the City Planning Commission, back to this joint committee before full adoption by city council of any ordinance, so that will still take quite a while, but we're moving forward, bear with me, especially that even if we were to release language today, a draft ordinance language today, the soonest I could get anything to the Cultural Affairs Commission and the City Planning Commission would be about three months out because of our public participation policy, this is a good thing, we've been doing this all year, where We've been doing this all year where we give a 60-day public comment period and then take some time to, you know, resynthesize those comments and before we go to the commission. And so we would be looking at early next year as the soonest possible before we could bring anything to commission. That's the presentation. I thank you very much and happy to avail myself to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman. And, of course, keep pressing forward, have any questions for Mr. Blackman? Okay, let's keep going. You have a question?
I have a question, yes. First of all, excellent report. I think it's very thorough and I really appreciate your thoroughness and thoughtfulness and presenting. I do have one question. My office had spoken to the City Attorney's Office about, in two, there was a lawsuit prior to 2007, had found that the Department of Cultural Affairs had exercised too much discretion over content when determining approval of permits. And now with the new easement permit, we're not going to have that issue, right? Because as Mr. Krikorian pointed out, we have full discretion for anything once we get an easement. Is that?
Yeah, yes. City Attorney Ken Fong here. When I came to the city, I thought I was going to do land use law, but the first, one of the first pieces of litigation handed to me was the litigation involving the mural sign regulations in 2002 and 2003. And it's true that murals on private property used to go before the Cultural Affairs Commission. And that case involved a legal concept called unfettered discretion, where basically if you don't have discrete criteria for a body looking at something and they can just, you know, use full subjectivity, the courts will normally strike that. So when we litigated that case, the courts invalidated a portion of the mural sign regulations, but it was all moot anyway because by that time, the City Council had decided that murals were too much trouble to deal with at the time and they had enacted a ban on them. But ever since then, you know, there's, we realize that people want to have murals and at the same time, they don't want to have off-site signage, graffiti, other things that are troublesome. So that's why we've been in constant contact with Portland, who's a step ahead of us in dealing with these things. We have our own sign litigation, which has taught us a lot. And so basically, just to sum up, from a legal standpoint, there's two things that we can do here. We can have the government's speech, you know, using an easement so that the city has displays actually its own artwork on private property, but it is owned and maintained by the city. And then the other approach is some type of time, place and manner regulations where we set discrete regulations that don't require subjectivity on our part and everybody has to live with those same rules. Now, the danger when you have content neutral regulations is sometimes you get murals that some people won't like. And you're always going to have that, where you have any mural, you have half the people will like it, half the people will love it, and some people don't care.
But there's only set criteria by which when a permit can be provided or not. There's no real discretion. It's just, you know, these guidelines, you could get that government, government easement, blah, blah, blah. And as long as they meet those criteria, there's no discretion in the permit.
Yes, you know, I guess that's the service that I try to provide, is I try to work with planning and the other departments to remind them that if you have proper time, place and manner regulations, you can allow almost anything that you want, you just have to craft them carefully. You have to impose restrictions on height, size, location. And planning is very good at doing that. They know every part of the city and, for example, if they ever do, there's been talk of doing a test district where they'll do a mural sign district. They would try to craft those regulations so that they're appropriate and they allow mostly the mural signage that they want. So, you know, we have to see.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Just to follow up on that, so the time, place and manner restrictions might include, for example, it might be based on zoning, where murals might only be permitted in non-residential zones.
Well, yes.
Those sorts of, that would be the place kind of restriction.
That's right. You know, you can use your imagination, but normally I like to have them restricted to physical, objective criteria, not anything subjective, because then it's too loosey-goosey for us to defend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I'm working with Adrian Corosalem. And I want to thank you for hard work, as well as Manzal Jankowski.
We're all a team.
Building and safety, we have Luke Sanpero. I know it pays off for questions. We have to call you on the microphone, unless you maybe want to say something? No? He's smiling, yeah, sure, I'm going to talk. Sure, one more question, Counselor.
On the easement option, there's a mandate that it lasts for more than five years, I think, in the Portland case that we're proposing here. So that raises a couple of issues. One, what happens if, you know, after that easement is granted and it goes up, it's just not, it just, the person changes their mind. So they, you know, are going to do an Andy Warhol, you know, Coke bottle or Campbell's Soup can mural and they promise it'll be up there for five years. And lo and behold, you know, a month later, it's some other company's logo. You start to get into the issue then of can it be used? Can that five-year device to prevent advertising be circumvented if you just ignore it and, you know, suffer the consequences as a cost of doing business? That's number one. Number two is with a five-year span, I assume the easement will run with the land, so it would still be binding on a subsequent owner if there's a change in ownership because your cover is an example of a situation where a new building owner comes along and decides that the beautiful mural on the side of the building that people have loved and adored for, you know, years and years is no longer necessary and paints it over. So, I mean, what are the implications of change in ownership and lack of compliance on that fight?
Okay, well, maybe I'll address the, Ken Fong again. I'll address the first question and Tanner can probably address the second question. The first question, it basically is at the heart of every sign litigation that I've worked on. When there's enough money and motivation involved, you will have sign companies and other folks come in and try to skirt the system, basically put up illegal signs in the middle of the night on a holiday. And it begins to honestly to tax our building and safety enforcement system because there's a lot of acreage in the city and, you know, they're very equipped to do this, but they only have so many inspectors. So I just think that that's a, maybe that's another component realistically that you have to consider is when you have a system like this, you have to have enforcement, you have to have monitoring, and that's what building and safety does. As you know, you can put as many rules on the books as you want, but if you don't adequately enforce them, they become meaningless.
And I, so I'd add, and I guess kind of an answer to both, the permits we give encumber the land, not the owner, as I understand. You can sell the land and that person gets the conditional use permit to sell alcohol or any different type of...
Yeah, yes, that's normally the case. When you have something running with the land, such as a CUP, you want whoever happens to own the property to comply with those conditions.
And so this was an issue when we were first discussing this 2009 of what happens if I sell the property, if I have this easement mural? It transfers. That's how it's worked in Portland and it is sort of contractual, is that the right word? That they would have to have it there for five years and I don't think they can just change their mind in Portland halfway through and say, oh, we didn't really want that.
Yes, I haven't looked at what Portland does specifically, but I would assume they have some type of covenant or something similar that they have recorded on the property. Because if you spend thousands of dollars on an art mural, you don't want to have it taken down.
You got another observation?
Yes, I'd like to address this...
Situate yourself, please.
Pat Gomez, Cultural Affairs Department. In Portland, the way that it works is that they grant the easement for five years, but within that agreement is the allowability for the easement to be taken away if there's a change of ownership or if the current owner wishes to do extensive remodeling so that it would no longer allow for that mural. So it's not holding that property owner for that full period under every circumstance. It has specific circumstances in which that easement can be released.
Okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Tanner, for, Mr. Blackman, for your hard work. Very well done, as well as Cultural Affairs. Thank you, Felicia. So that being said, we'll be going to public comment cards now. And again, just speak into the mic, give your name and address, just keep an eye on the clock and we'll try to keep this moving. First, we'll be speakers. You can queue up if you want. At the microphone, you have Alon King, Felipe Sanchez, and Deborah Jalti Padilla. Come on in. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Alon King. I'm kind of surprised I'm the first speaker. I mean, there's been a lot of work done on this, obviously, and I applaud everyone involved for having a really sincere desire to see more art in the public space in Los Angeles. I come to you principally as a parent, but also as a professional artist in Los Angeles. Why is it that we really want these murals anyway? I mean, what good are they? To me, and I think to everybody, a mural is more than fine art, it's a piece of education. It's a way for communities to coalesce, it's a sense of identity for a community. As you mentioned, Mr. Alon, it's providing you with education that wasn't in the books. And so I think the best art is art, or then the best murals are those that are provoking people and that may be, what would you call it, controversial. Because if it's not a listening and response in you, if it's something that you already know, what good, it's basically just decoration. So for there to be a real dialogue with the public, it has to be controversial, it has to be saying something, it has to be a listening and response, and it's a communication with the community. So it's serving an education role in that sense, a dialogue with the people. And so here's a provocative statement. Possibly people don't know that still now in September, 105 teachers in LAUSD are pink-sliped art teachers, okay? So this is a question about commitment that we have as a community to art and to this dialogue. So I think, I'm going to run over just for one second, the money that it would cost to rehire these 105 art teachers to share art with our community is 5% of what the company graffiti removal systems is paid by the city. I believe they make $10 to $20 million a year painting art gray, which is a form of censorship.
Thank you.
End of story.
That is a very important point. Thank you, sir. Please, next speaker.
Good afternoon, City Council members. On behalf of ALAs artists and the communities...
And again, your name.
Excuse me?
Your name.
Felipe Sanchez.
Yes.
Good afternoon. On behalf of ALAs artists and the communities they serve, thank you for your support of our creative economy. Again, my name is Felipe Sanchez and I am a member of the Mural Working Group as led by Tanner Blackman. I also represent the Social and Public Art Resource Center, one of the leading community-based art centers in America, located right here in Los Angeles. The progress that has been made on this issue is very impressive and we are grateful for your commitment to find a way to allow for the production of fine art murals in our city again. The presence of murals are vital to the life of our working class and multicultural city. If we do not stress the importance and need for public art spaces and murals, then the only visual stimulation left in our city will be corporate advertisements and concrete light. I believe that it is our obligation to ensure that consumer-driven behavior does not permeate our future and that we find the means to allow for cultural expression in our city. And I believe that we're closer to that goal today. So thank you for your commitment to this issue and for your service to our city.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Deborah Padilla, the executive director for 18 years of the Social and Public Art Resource Center, better known as Spark, which was founded in 1976 by distinguished UCLA professor and muralist Judy Baca, who was also the founder of the first citywide mural program in 1974 based out of the Department of Recreation and Parks. She sends her regrets that she can't be with us today, having just completed with our team our rigorous final phase of restoring Spark's signature work, The Great Wall of Los Angeles. She's taking a well-deserved break. Spark is in support of developing a legally defensible method to allow new murals in Los Angeles to preserve and enhance our cultural heritage and encourage the creation of new murals. Our request is to have a policy that would define murals as something other than signs, establish a citywide program for permitting murals in the city. We also implore the city to help devise a viable and sustainable method for maintenance, for mural maintenance. Institutions like Spark are critical to the delivery of the arts directly into neighborhoods and are as vital as museums to the health of the arts in a great city. With a successful 35-year track record, public and private partnership, Spark stands ready to be of service. We imagine a day where once again, in the spirit of the city-funded Neighborhood Pride mural program, which produced 105 murals in every district of the city, employed 95 established and emerging artists, employed over 1,100 young people, we will see a vibrant art form reclaim its rightful place in the city that gave us Dalvid Alfaro Siqueiros, Willie Geron, Irene Cervantes, Alice Patrick, Kent Twitchell, Judy Baca, Eastlaw Streetscapers, Richard Wyatt, Joe Bravo, Raul Gonzalez, Vio, Ernesto de la Loza, and many more. We owe the next generation a chance to also paint their history and their story. I stand here a proud member of the working, of the Mural Working Group led by Tanner Blackman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I gotta keep you on hold over here.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
If I might just say, The Great Wall of Los Angeles is alongside Coldwater Canyon between Oxnard and Burbank. It's an incredible treasure of Los Angeles, just been fully restored. I urge everyone to go see it as soon as you can.
All right, great, well, thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Laura Cuadros, Elizabeth Planey, and Arma Salcedo. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Hi, Arma and Laura had to leave, so it'll just be me, Elizabeth. I'm Elizabeth Planey.
Okay.
Who's that?
And my daughter.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Planey. I work with Unión de Vecinos. I am also a resident of Borough Heights. Unión de Vecinos works in the city of Borough Heights and also in New York. And I'm here to talk more, not so much from the artist's perspective, but from the community perspective. We support murals in terms of culture and from an artist's perspective, but the way for us that we see murals being used is in the transformation of public spaces. A lot of the work that we do, especially in Borough Heights, is around transforming alleys and streets to address and change the conditions that create violence. So in our alleys, a lot that we do is doing cleanups, movie nights, organizing carnissabas, organizing places for kids to play. And one of the things that we've been wanting to do has been murals. And we have quite a bit of support from the private property owners in the alleys in which we work that have been wanting to do murals for a long time. A couple of years ago, one of our property owners, Onzizo Chavez, was supporting our work and we worked with a lot of the youth, 10 years and under, as well as allowing the mothers to do a draft of several murals that they wanted to put in a specific alley. Unfortunately, because of the ban, we were not able to go forward with that project. But it is something that's very important as a way of transforming a space for kids to play because we don't have a lot of public safe spaces and really creating a healthy and safer environment. And murals would be a way that we'd be able to do that. So we support a process, an open process to have murals by community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Our next four speakers, we have with us Cynthia Rogers, Saber, and Daniel LaHoda. Come on in. Ms. Rogers, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Rogers and from Venice. I'm also representing the Venice Neighborhood Council and co-chair of the Venice Arts Committee. And essentially, we're backing everything that you guys have been saying. And, um, essentially, we're backing everything that you guys have been saying today. Uh, I think one thing that we would like to say, um, with respect to some solutions, we really like the Portland solution with the original art murals program. Uh, so that's kind of the main thing, and, uh, that's what I'm here to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. That was the most inspiring speech in thirty seconds. That's great. Thank you very much, Saber. Now, were we in here together?
Yes, we were.
Okay.
It was a pleasure.
Good to meet you.
It's an honor to be here. Um, this is, uh, six thousand signatures I raised in less than three weeks internationally and locally, um, to help push this forward. Um, I wanna say thank you to everybody for pushing this forward, but I think we need to discuss the ugly side of what's been going on right now. Um, for instance, the city attorney's office and the sheriff's county have been targeting certain artists for a specific style, and right now I have, for instance, a best friend of mine being charged of felony because he's on probation for painting a mural, and they're wanting to put a civil case against him of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for painting murals. Um, there's really some ugly things going on behind the scenes, and this is all monies being allocated for the sheriffs to run around, around basically rampant to do what they want and target certain people. Um, apparently, they're trying to say that if you do a certain type of artwork, you will not be included in being able to participate in this process, and that is called the graffiti-stylized movement. Um, obviously, if you're doing illegal vandalism, you need to deal with that. I don't do that in the city of Los Angeles, and it's time that we move forward, and I, I think what we're doing here is really good. But, you know, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that I don't know if everyone else is aware, with Mr. Carmen Tutanich, with the county, uh, sheriffs, literally relentlessly harassing people, and I don't think it's good for the city to be spending money, um, to basically running around and then also extract money from small businesses because of this ordinance. Over time, this has been a real black eye on the city of Los Angeles internationally. I travel all over the world and represent Los Angeles, and this has been something that has been created fear amongst a lot of other artists that are traveling, and I think it's time that we move forward, and I wanna thank you all for doing that. So it's time to address why the sheriff is running around relentlessly without any checks and balances for a mural ordinance, and to, to choose what type of art is proper and what isn't, and I think that's, that's out of line, you know, basically at this point.
Saber, I just want to, just pronounce some facts, and, and I wanna be supportive. One is that the, uh, Carmen Tutanich is the city attorney, but he does not directly influence the sheriff. So, and that's a technicality, but...
Tenning two million dollar checks to them.
But I, I, but it's the county supervisor who oversees Sheriff Baca, who manages the sheriff's department.
Right. It's just language, though, that he's been putting out in his press releases, and the sheriff's press releases have been really ugly. Recently, they raided an artist's home and put his geo-tag on his house. So these are a lot of other things that are going on.
I'm not excusing it, but if we wanna find a way to respond to it, I'll work with you.
I appreciate that.
But we need to follow through with the chains of command and how we influence this kind of behavior that you're speaking to.
Well, it was basically from the city attorney's end-of-day scenario program that he tried to implement, which he actually called it the end-of-day scenario, and that was something that he was trying to do for his graffiti removal, and that's now lumped it in with this, uh, moratorium, has kind of been muddled together between the two.
I'd be more happy to sit down with you on an individual meeting and just kind of break this down and see where we can take it.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Saber. Daniel Lahoda?
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your attention to this important matter. My name is Daniel Lahoda, and I'm the founder and producer of the LA Free Walls Project. Since December of two thousand nine, we have voluntarily produced sixty-four murals on over a hundred thousand square feet of outdoor wall space in downtown LA. This project consists of the most significant concentration of public art in the United States of America, right here in our backyard. These murals by some of the world's most renowned contemporary artists have been featured in countless publications celebrating arts and culture and the development of Los Angeles. The Arts District is in the midst of a massive cultural renaissance, and this project is the face of this development for many residents, businesses, and property owners in downtown. The LA Free Walls Project has been endorsed by the Los Angeles River Artists Business Association, the Arts District Bid, Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard, and many developers and shareholders in the future of downtown LA. In fact, according to the bid, since the inception of this project, reported instances of graffiti have decreased by fifty percent in the Arts District. This decrease in the graffiti abatement spending has resulted in large savings for taxpayers. We have not had a single complaint about the project from building and safety, the bid, or any individual from the public. In fact, the only issues we have faced are from the misguided and inappropriate actions of LAPD and County Sheriff. It's very important to understand the marginalization of our community. It is clear the current level of training needs to evolve with the needs and expectations of our community. In the spring of this year, I was asked to be a part of the new mural ordinance working group. I'm confident that, given your continued support, the Departments of City Planning and Cultural Affairs will continue to work with the community to meet our expectations and create an ordinance that allows us to continue to express our First Amendment rights in a productive and legal manner. I stand in solidarity with artists and the community who have been affected by the current moratorium on murals and the currently inadequate public art policy in Los Angeles. I ask that this joint committee support the ongoing proliferation of public art in Los Angeles with policies specific to mural development. The city of LA needs policies that protects artists' rights, guarantees their safety while working in the streets, and allows for a legally defensible set of expectations.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, Shani D., and Stasiewski. Shani D. Hi, good afternoon. And Stasiewski. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you very much for hearing us today. I'm here on behalf of the Working Mural Group headed by Tanner Blackman and artists Chor Boogie, Estria, Kodak, and Vogue. Uh, I am here also in support of the longstanding tradition of visual storytelling and in support of artists, Mural Conservancy Los Angeles, and property owners wishing to once again be able to legally beautify this great city. I ask for the ban on the most ancient form of art known by man and woman to be removed, for most to be recognized as murals, not signs, and for protection and procedure to be implemented on behalf of artists, carers, and property owners. Please allow our own eyes to once again be painted in the city of Los Angeles, which is known as the capital throughout the world, and I also feel there should be a definition, a legal definition regarding the word graffiti, um, as it appears to art and as it applies to art, not as a crime. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Look at that banner.
Hello, my name is Stasiewski. I'm the director of ICUR, an LA-based mural production company, and I'm a member of the Mural, City Mural Working Group. I'd like to thank you for bringing this mural, this, uh, issue to this point today. The primary concern of the mural ordinance should be to make sure that the language does not infringe on the First Amendment rights of artists and other citizens. The planning department keeps referencing the Portland model for us to follow. The bottom line is that in Portland, there's no restriction on the content of a mural. There's no off-site or onsite commercial or fine art. Under the original easement system in Portland, they do have the discretion to restrict content because those murals are effectively city property. However, the easement process in Portland was ineffective as far as the artists are concerned, and was basically abandoned for the new content-neutral system. It's clear that the easement alone will not work in Los Angeles. We may be able to utilize easements for larger murals, but for the ninety percent of the murals that could be created in Los Angeles, it won't work. When we look at the history of the First Amendment and the Supreme Court, we find that very few examples of any sort of limitation on content. The only examples in which the Supreme Court has ruled to limit free speech, whether it's commercial or other, is if the content is obscene, untrue, libelous, or encourages an illegal act, or is likely to invite imminent physical violence or harm. That's it. The, the current Supreme Court has been even more zealous in the defense of all sorts of speech, including commercial speech. You cannot define a mural as something other than a sign based on the mural content. The only way to do that would be to have a bureaucrat review the content of that mural. There are ways that you can limit commercial murals through time, place, and matter restrictions. The easiest way is to require that a mural be, must be completely hand-painted onsite. You can also limit murals to commercial zones and require them to be painted in a certain size and to start at ground level. You can require community meetings and community review of the content, but you cannot restrict the content if it is something that you disapprove of. No super graphics, no posters, nothing adhered to the wall, nothing covering windows, etc. Keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next two speakers, Isabel Rajares Williams, Piper Sevins, and Nolene Sevins. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing us, if not to express ourselves through our murals, to express ourselves with words about what we think about the creation of murals. My name is Isabel Rojas Williams, and as the Executive Director of the Mural Conservancy of Los Angeles, founded in nineteen eighty-seven, and is a member of the Mural Working Group headed by Tanner Blackman, I believe that this is a crucial moment in which public art has been recognized as an important artistic endeavor by museums, cultural organizations, and the community at large. Yet, there is also a time in which many of our greatest historical murals have been defaced and the creation of nuance prohibited. The nineteen sixty-seventies mural Renaissance in Los Angeles that created murals such as the ones in Estrada Courts, Ramona Gardens, The Great Wall of Los Angeles, there are many murals throughout Los Angeles inspired by Zicatos greatly influenced the creation of the nineteen eighty-four Olympic Freeway Murals, which brought much civic pride to the city of Los Angeles. I believe that the presence set by these historic works of Los Angeles' cultural legacy in the public art arena are especially timely today. It is time to write and pass an ordinance that will allow our muralists, young and all, to be part of a creative collaboration that will continue to write the history of Los Angeles through its iconic murals. We at the Mural Conservancy are doing our job by being on the verge of beginning restoration of one of the nineteen eighty-four Olympic Freeway Murals and on a mural at Estrada Courts. Please help our art community to preserve and create public art legally and safely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, Piper.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Piper Severance. I am an employee of the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, and I work with the artist Saber. Um, I wanna thank the committee for its sincere efforts to deal with this issue, and I want to applaud the creation of content-neutral codes. I urge the committee to reconsider its conflation of graffiti art and vandalism. Uh, current code defines, you know, uh, murals that use text, and in many cases, these artists are abstractionists who use letter forms to create their art. Um, I'm also very concerned about a process in which they're required to submit, um, sketches in advance for approval, which would inhibit the, uh, informal and improvisational nature of this art form. Um, thank you again for your focus on this issue, and, um, please end this mural moratorium.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Severance. I am the registered domestic partner of Saber. Um, I just wanted to start out by clarifying for everybody, um, that graffiti art does not mean vandalism. It is, uh, an amazing, beautiful, large art movement with street art, very much like the Chicano movement in the sixties and seventies. It's very vital and very, very important to the city. Um, a lot of the murals that are going up right now are going up, being paid for by these artists themselves. They, they supply the paint, they supply the time, they do all of it by themselves. They don't ask the city for money, they don't ask the store owner for money, they just ask that they get to be able to display their art. I'm worried, um, about the process of the city being involved in the content of the murals. Um, art is subjective. People have tried to put, uh, a definition to it, it's not gonna happen. So we, I wanted to applaud what, uh, Stash said regarding, um, you know, if it is offensive or if it is vulgar, but not, nothing that's going up is like that. These, these are letters, like, like Piper was saying, these are, this is a form of artwork that involves letters. And going back to what Daniel Lahoda and Saber was saying regarding the LAPD and the sheriff and, and their view that, um, they're being, that the, the mural moratorium being attached to signs, having lettering being the basis of that connection is, is a little convenient for, um, any kind of prosecution toward artists that use letters as the basis of their art form. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With due respect, I'd like to call up Mr. Juan Hini and Mr. Robert Payer. And I address them this way, colleagues, 'cause, uh, they have done some amazing artwork in my district, particularly on Broadway and Daly. Uh, there was a beautiful, beautiful panels of the history of, uh, the Spanish-speaking community that goes back to, uh, classical periods, and, um, we've been able to refurbish it and bring it back to life for the new generations to run from, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Andreas. Uh, very few words. Um, I'm a co-founder of Eastlaw Streetscapers, and the very mural you're talking about on Daly and North Broadway, uh, was our very first mural, and it was painted on private property. Um, we just came back today from UCLA, as many of you know, um, from the banners hanging from the lampposts. Pacific Standard Time is an art movement that's been, uh, that was proposed by the Getty Center as a example of, hey, guess what? New York is not the only art capital in the world. LA has always had an art movement, and this covers the years from nineteen forty-five to nineteen eighty. Um, we, uh, at UCLA, they are putting together, uh, where is that? Several things, uh, related to Chicano art. Uh, the one we're in is mapping another LA, the Chicano Art Movement. This is, we're in the history books and with, along with many other artists, and, uh, this weekend, they'll be, um, exhibiting, uh, the work and histories of many of these groups like Spark, Goiz, uh, uh, well, too few, too many to name. Uh, but, let me, getting back to the, uh, the, the murals on private property, uh, in our neighborhood, I mean, I live in the first district in Lincoln Heights, and I've seen beautiful murals painted on people's front wall, on the garage door, and gone because of the, uh, city was gonna cite, uh, issue citations. So, um, I just wanna say that, uh, murals and billboards are at the opposite end of the optical spectrum. Uh, how anybody could, uh, mix those two up is, uh, amazing. Then, um, I could just say that billboards advertise profits, and murals advertise ideas. And, um...
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
Let it go at that.
It's without hesitation that I need to call off the two minutes, but, and again, Mr. Payer, welcome, sir.
Uh, Councilman, I, I did sign up to talk for, uh, how do you define a mural? Uh, did you want me to speak right now on that subject?
Yes, we're capturing all the items from two to eight, so this will be the time.
Okay. I did my, uh, first mural in nineteen seventy. Uh, it was the first art gallery in East LA, and this was pre-proposition thirteen, which I feel is what we're fighting against right now. We don't have the revenues that we want. Uh, my first two murals, well, one was for free at Estrada Courts for Cat Felix. My second was for Sloane's Dry Cleaners, and I presented, uh, a colored cartoon with all our ideas that I wanted to paint on it. It was very well rendered, and this is what you were gonna get. Uh, I made agreement with a private, uh, business, and the second, uh, at Sloane's, and then throughout our career, uh, with, from Goiz, I moved and I formed, uh, Eastlaw Streetscapers with Wayne, and we did countless pieces, and we've had, uh, we've mentored many young men and women. Uh, we provided jobs in our various studios throughout the city, and, you know, we've, uh, been, uh, originators in telling a story in a mural. You know, I appreciate many of the present-day, uh, more instant murals, but I, I, I do it by hand and with a lot of love, and I hope, uh, you keep murals available to the, the public, and Los Angeles is the, uh, the communication center of the world, and we shouldn't close the door to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I just wanna express that the spirit and, and love you show in the murals, I think, is what we're trying to achieve through the environment to allow for such artistry, so thank you so much for the sacrifices and your hard work, uh, to the artists that have been part of your experience. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, our next, uh, speakers, Raul Gonzalez and Roberto Lavoie. Our next speakers, Raul Gonzalez and Roberto de Loyola. Come on up. Oh, these guys are cool. These guys are cool, too. When I start this.
Hello. Thank you, thank you for having me here. Thank you, council members, for being part of this issue and bringing it to light again. I know it's been a while since the last time that we came here and talked about it. I mean, I kind of stand on the same principle that a lot of the people before me spoke on from our maestros, our teachers who brought this art form to the present time where you have a lot of youth now picking it up. I want to also, I guess, make a distinction between graffiti art, street art, mural art. I mean, I want to just talk about what art does to the community and how it heals it. It really does not, doesn't matter what type of art it is, but how art heals communities, specifically in the areas that are, that don't have a lot of money being put into them or low-income areas where you have a lot of, pretty much, youth that are running around with no teaching, with no pledge, you know, no, no. So, you know, I just wanted to talk about how murals, they educate, you know? Again, no matter the medium, they educate. What is the purpose people are doing them for? Why are they doing it? Are they doing it to promote themselves as artists? Are they doing it to pass a message, to heal with the art, right? I want to talk about how the art helps people find common ground. You know, you share stories with the people that are there seeing you paint it, while you're painting it and when you're conceiving the idea. Public art is for the public, so the public should have a say on how, on what they want to see in their walls. Sometimes people are getting fined and being punished for having art in their community. One last thing before I beep's. I worked as a muralist and the mural ban has really affected me economically also and a lot of other artists where we are looking in other cities to get work and we should be putting in work in our own communities first before we go somewhere else. Thank you.
I just want to, to chair of you, allow me to thank Raul publicly for the work he's been doing in my district. He is, he's all over, all over my district in El Sereno in Boa Heights and sometimes you see him with a group of young students around him learning the trade and it's great to see. He also did a great mural that my office commissioned at Ramona Gardens when I first got to office and I realized that that community had been neglected for a long time. We asked the community what they wanted, they said they wanted more murals. So, we commissioned Raul and he did a great Art Heals mural and he took the, you know, input from all the community. They came up with a beautiful mural that just went up on public wall, though it was a public wall, that's why it could go up. But, but my point being is that I've seen great artists like Raul be inhibited from doing what he can do because of this moratorium and we shouldn't do that no longer. And he, like he said, he has something, has to go to other places to show off his skill and craft and provide his great talent out there, but we got to get rid of this moratorium as soon as possible. Thanks.
Also, I heard Peter Paul at Village and he did some great work in Cypress Park, across from Nightingale Junior High. We're having some tension with gang members in the area and he laid out that artwork and he was teaching them and it was a sight to see, so again, I just want to echo those thanks. Our next speaker is Roberto de Loyola.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Roberto de Loyola. I'm one of the co-founders of the public art project called The Mobile Mural Lab. The Mobile Mural Lab is a mobile art space that allows individuals and communities to visually express themselves within the public realm. This happens by means of painting the outer surface of a retired city search and rescue van. The interior is used to share information and foster dialogue revolving around the current conditions of public space here in Los Angeles. Due to the vehicle's mobility, the temporary wall space complies with the city's sign ordinance as it is not a permanent mural or wall sign and has the ability to move locations. Over the past 14 months, The Mobile Mural Lab has collaborated with over 25 communities and individuals who have contacted us via our website requesting a space to paint, exhibit, or learn about the history of murals and its processes specific to Los Angeles. The communities we have worked with include charter schools, youth-based organizations, churches, traditional mural painters, graffiti artists, and various nonprofits. Through my experience working on this project, I can confirm that the people of Los Angeles are in need of a mural paint program where visual expression can serve not only to beautify, but as a space that promotes community dialogue. As the majority of our projects have some sort of youth-based involvement, we have also observed that the youth are eager to learn alternative ways of painting and expressing themselves. I urge the city of Los Angeles to revise the current sign ordinance as well as implement a youth-based public art program that provides education on mural history, mural processes, and the space to do, and the space to do so within our communities. Thank you very much.
I want to conclude the public hearing for this agenda on these items. And are there any other questions or observations my colleagues like to make to the staff, given the public input that we have? Any other observations do my colleagues like to make in light of this information?
Well, first of all, I suspect you're going to go over what the next steps are so we could know what the next steps are, but I do have, that's a question of mine, what the next steps are and to reiterate the timeline. But I do have a question on the, what was it called? The vintage mural permit process in the five years. I suspect we're going to ask, I'm not sure, we're going to get another report back, we're in ordinance, we dropped it.
Well, let me put it in context and hopefully that'll get us to a place where we can continue to get some traction and some more language so that we can get an ordinance in place. It's crucial that, as Mr. Blackman Tyler has stated, and he's going through the process of developing the ordinance and he's going through the public hearing and they need to build up within CEQA all their public hearing obligations before they go to commission. And after commission, we still have to go through another round of the give and take and then it comes to plum. Everything said that we want to be able to do is recommend directives that instructs the city attorney to address the issues of the vintage mural permit, time, place, and manner permit, and try and come forth with cost-neutral strategies to the city. So, that's, well, let me just go through them so that we can get some clarity as to where we're going to go. So, I'll start with the first set of recommendations, there are actually four of them. The first one is approve the February 7, 2011 Cultural Affairs Department proposed recommendations to permit murals on private property and thereby request the city planning department in consultation with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to adopt the vintage mural permit and a time, place, and manner permit, inasmuch as these options would be cost-effective to the city. So, that's one set of recommendations. The other, instruct the CLO to work with the Cultural Affairs Department, planning department, Department of Building and Safety, and Department of Public Works in consultation with the city attorney to provide a cost estimate that quantifies staff costs to issue, administer, and enforce a public art easement permit for fine art and public art murals to be located on private property and to identify the source of funds to do so. Also, include the part on resources available for the maintenance of existing murals and recommended strategies, mechanisms for funding, the maintenance of existing murals through a public art easement approach. The third directive, instruct the CLO, Department of Cultural Affairs, and other city departments to identify contractual personnel, staff, and any other costs associated with implementing the city's mural permitting, enforcement, and maintenance program. And lastly, to note in file items three and eight, inasmuch as the Cultural Affairs and Planning Department recommendations addresses their intent to develop a process to install fine art murals on private property. And colleagues, in going through these discussions and listening to the reports, I wanted to make sure that whatever we put forth allows our colleagues, the other council members to understand that we have the capacity to enforce. And working backwards to enforce, we need to understand how to move the energy of the various departments to implement an ordinance that captures the spirit and the goals of this body as we've been praising the artists for their work, but also trying to find a destination for their work, a method by which we respect the First Amendment Act, the freedom of speech, but also recognize the stakeholders that are the property owners, the neighborhoods, as well as the ability to express themselves. So, this issue accountability became prominent in how we move forward so we can realize an ordinance that is implementable and that Building Safety has clarity as to how they could administer their discretion without the type of conflicts that we see today. And hopefully, get rid of this ban and have the parameters necessary to have that clarity to move forward. And that would be the intent of these instructions. And then hopefully, planning commission, after continuing this public hearing process through the work of the planning department and Cultural Affairs, that we can come back with policy and ordinance that we can implement. And that would be my wishful thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think with your recommendations, what you're instructing our departments to do is to continue with the process as outlined in the timeline provided by the planning department, which will start codifying and getting some more language to the proposals put forward today by the Cultural Affairs Department and the planning department, which I think is a very good thing. I do have, in the area of the five gap that I talked about earlier, if we do the vintage program and then you have those five years and any new murals, you have the Portland model. If we could be provided with an analysis or we can move forward just as a report back through this process, what if we, instead of having that five-year gap, we don't have a time period and we started by the implementation of the ordinance if we just grandfather in all those murals beforehand? So, if we could do that? And secondly, I know that we put in a motion to say that we will not cite murals that have gone up recently. Building and Safety has been cooperative and been lenient, but they do have a responsibility when somebody does call about a mural that's gone up, they have an obligation to go out there. But I would be interested if we could, before we come up with these new, this new way of preserving and promoting new murals, that instead of having a citation system, perhaps we could go through the proposed city attorney's ACE program where it's an administrative procedure and it's not a citation procedure. And that could allow for more mediation and discussion. For example, in my district in Boa Heights, Assumption Elementary School put up a beautiful mural on a very small wall of kids reading books, you know, somebody complained about it. I don't know why they would complain about it, it's already complained about it. And Building and Safety went out there and they issued a citation, so. But if you have a, the ACE program, I think will provide for administrative procedure for some relief rather than a citation process and see if we could explore that as well.
That's a great idea because not only, as I sort of, I somewhat understand that ordinance as it's moving forward, is it, sort of, these things then, which in the past were sort of a higher order bad thing, are only then infractions?
Thank you.
And therefore, these sort of compounding issues that some of Saber and others spoke on today, that it's much less of a...
That sounds like you're decriminalizing.
You're decriminalizing some work that somebody may have done and somebody just had to go say, hey, if we have a permit in play, if we have a permit process in place, go back and say, hey, you should have applied for a permit, that's all you had to do, as opposed to them having a citation now that, we're making it criminal, so. If we could implement that as well and see if that fits into this new realm of new regulations that we're creating. But other than that, I think we've come a long way since, oh, one final thing, I do want to thank the department for responding to my request and looking at the Spark proposal on how we could provide some revenue. Did you give direction on how they're going to come back with it? So, that's in your recommendations?
Right.
And that's, I think, for me at least, we're really clamping down and providing the nuts and bolts on these ideas we had a few months back when we met. But the one we, I still think we need more work on is the revenue one and if we could get a better, tighten the screws on that a little bit more because we do need to identify more revenue sources. Spark has put out some numbers as to what they think it may cost to preserve some of our murals, but on the other side, we need to get a better sense of where this money will be coming from. I propose in the past that we take it from our graffiti trust fund, but, but we have to see how that works and I think we have to better tighten those screws around the revenue sources. Thank you.
And again, we will be looking to the CIO to help us create that structure in how we reach these goals. Councilor, anything else?
No, I think your recommendations are excellent. The only question I have is, there's a number of additional steps that staff has to take, both in preparing the ordinance, preparing the cost estimates, the revenue analysis that Mr. Weisert just described. Is it, would it be your intention to have those next steps come back to this committee then for a further committee hearing or directly to council? What would be your suggestion?
One, we need to first make sure we understand the commission's recommendations and the staff, given the directives that we articulated today, they can have a structure on which they can pursue and continue working this policy and the staff directs the commission. So, I also hope they'll be called back maybe once or twice.
Well, can I piggyback a bit? The way I understood was you were reading the directives, we're sort of splitting the baby. We're saying move forward, planning department with draft language in your process for a time, place, manner approach and in the vintage mural permit approach. But, we want you to report back to the joint committee about funding and revenue for the public art easement approaches, sort of the way I'm understanding.
So, it's a two-tier, if you will, because we do need to make sure they come back with these two areas of concern we still have out there. And again, as a mother, review, if you will, to make sure it's going to where we need it to be as policymakers before it gets to the council floor. So, it will come back to us.
Okay. The easement portion of it would be coming back to us with all the cost estimates and so on related to that. The vintage, the vintage murals and the time, place, and manner would go straight to ordinance drafting, which would then, the draft ordinance would go straight to council?
Well, they still need to go to commission.
Yeah. It would need to go, it's a zoning code ordinance, so it would need to go to the city planning commission. I don't think it necessarily must go to the Cultural Affairs Commission procedurally, but I want to take it there too, to get their blessing. So, it would, that sort of three-step process we have to adopt any ordinance, first the commission, then plum, then full council, it would have to go through that. So, after it goes to commission, we come back.
Very good. Thank you.
And I think the access points for the stakeholders that are here today and others who would want to chime in would have various point of entries, if you will, in responding to the work that is evolving and hopefully give us greater guidance in how to get to consensus. So, I think that'll help us out in the long run, too. Is there anything else we should cover? So, I'd like... So, I'd like to move these recommendations, we have a sec?
Along with Mr. Weisar's amendment...
Yes.
...to the issue of the grandfathering issue, he basically had concerns about the five-year limitation.
Right.
So, that needs to be further explored.
Right.
And also the issue about full-blown, the citation issue into the ACE program.
Great.
We can take these as sort of amending things in the draft ordinance?
So, based on the concerns and directives that Councilor Weisar added, along with the recommendations, I believe we can move this to the next level of involvement. And again, thank you, Tannehill, for your hard work. Somebody else who's been involved, Cultural Affairs, Building Safety, CIO, city attorney, and more importantly, those of you who have had the patience to enjoy this meeting throughout this time and are with us, and I look forward to working with you in the future. So, that being said...
We're applying it across to each of these, to this whole package, and then...
Yes, we put them under one umbrella.
We can do that, it's just, those report backs then will just be spelled out in the council recommendations, and then it'll all go together. Because either we do it all at one thing, or otherwise we've got to spell out which files, which we're holding back, which we're not. Because it's kind of a mismatch right now. So, unfortunately, I got to keep it for the public record.
It is sort of a mismatch, because the, how one boils down the policy goals don't necessarily match the 19 council motions that are out there.
Unfortunately, yeah, I've got a number of files here, so we're going to have to kind of coordinate so to make this work effectively.
That's why I think the, what, is it possible to do the recommendation of receiving and filing those and sort of moving forward with the recommendations from this committee?
Perhaps noting and filing the six motions that were before us today, and then adding the instructions from today as well.
Okay, that sounds like the path of easy resistance.
Recommendation one would be to note and file motions one through, three through eight, and recommendations two would be three, four, whatever number they are, the ones that Mr. Raul has read, in addition to Mr. Weisar's.
That would, that would work. That would be effective.
Okay, so we're clear?
Clear.
Mr. Attorney, we're fine? All right, so that being said, the directive's been passed, it's been seconded, it's approved by the joint committee, and that moves us forward. And again, thank you very much. I have a public comment. Seeing that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Because it's a, right, it's a mismatch, otherwise I'm, as a matter of fact, those recommendations, I'm going to have to talk to...